Approval of the minutes, September 9th, 2019, regular session and the September 19th, Motion to second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Foe. Motion passes. Reports, administrative reports, Mrs. Circle. Start with you.
Good evening. First of all, Jordan Gasser has joined us today. She's also going to be one of our student representatives. And then, of course, Angel Prince is here. We are going to get nameplates, so they will be legends here next to the board meeting. Yep. Lots of exciting things going on to the point that I cannot believe the end of the first quarter is almost over. I mean, it ends, well, it did end, and grades are posted as of tomorrow. We have, as you see in my handout, our Student of the Month already for October. We have had some exciting stuff. Last month, we did a manufacturing field trip with Ms. Hamilton and Ms. Brummett where we took several kids, a few different kids, to visit and experience some of the different manufacturing options that kids are having. We're also planning on having one here in-house coming up as well. I feel like this is an important component that we need to be incorporating so our students can walk out and realize there's other things to do besides just college. Amy Tonsoni, who is our new LMC person this year, the librarian, has started incorporating some really unique things. She's having a monthly lunch and learn where the students can come down to the LMC during lunch. And this last week, we had Mayor Shane Evans, and he's came. Kids asked questions, and it was really neat. It was really good. We have a blood drive coming on Friday. Homecoming was spectacular. We have some pictures from homecoming. Career Day, and thank you, Mr. Schwartzkopf was there, it went so well. I was highly impressed with all of the teachers that organized the Career Day, which they're all listed down there. They did lots of hours preparing it, and we had so many different speakers that were in. It went amazingly well, and all the students talked about it as well. But it really did wonderful. Mr. Scheider may be talking about, but Josh Strauss was continuing to offer his dad's that is going on. She had so much stuff going on there. We had several students that were honored in the RMC board. There's a picture there. Veterans Night was huge. Duke Pink, Jordan can probably talk about that a little bit. We are continuing our library project with Interact Club with Ms. Mark Kavitch, who is now a daddy. He had little ones this weekend. And we also have, on top of manufacturing, we had, Mrs. Miller's class went to Ivy Tech for the Health Science Fair as well. And we inducted our National Arm Society. It's like tons of stuff going on all the time. We do have, coming up on Wednesday, PSAT, where all of our sophomores and juniors will be testing PSAT. Seniors are going to be doing community service projects, which is part of the graduation requirement. And our freshmen are going to start that Resilient Grant kickoff, so they're going to be doing activities within there. And finally, before I let Angel and Jordan talk, we do have, one of our students has come down with cancer. Alex Milberg is fighting cancer. He just had chemo last week. It was one of those where he went to get his physical, and they found a huge mass by his lung, so please keep him in your thoughts. We're going to be doing some fundraisers because the mom, she's just a temp right now, but just moved into the area. This is going to be rough on the family. Any two would like to add?
Support Alex Milberg, also a councilwoman, to do a big campaign event on Friday, and we'll bring even sell that in. Is that what you want?
So we've got like each of the classes that are freshmen, so we're actually doing something as well. So it's just more day matches that we're actually doing. Did you say last name or?
Milberg. I think it's in there, Neil. Mr. Anderson, it's on the last page, I believe. Yeah. Anything else? No? Thank you. I am going to run here a little bit, because we have the high school choir concert going on at the same time. I will be up there if you need anything as well. Thank you.
I have just provided for you for this month's meeting just kind of where we are in terms of grants that have been written, what has been approved, the monies that they have been approved for, or if they are pending, and then how those monies can be spent. On the front side is Title, all the Title grants, and then on the backside is Special Ed. Let me just try to hand it to you. So the Title I grant, the one that has actually been approved right now that is not still pending or has some changes that need to be made, is the Title I grant. That Title I grant is basically part of my salary, and then there are seven interventionists that make up the rest of that amount. There is, there is one program that we do buy at the elementary with that, the iReady Reading Toolkit, and I think it comes out to like $8,000 and some dollars that comes out of that grant to cover that for the elementary. That, Mr. Scheider and I had talked last summer about implementing a kindergarten readiness boot camp. This would be based off of assessing the students at kindergarten roundup using the Brigance Readiness Assessment and giving us a baseline as to where those incoming kindergartners are before they start school. And then taking, I think we had talked, maybe 12 or 15 students at the lowest, we set a benchmark. And then during our regular summer school time, taking money, and that's already been set aside out of this, where we would pay two teachers to do a three-week readiness camp with those kindergartners to get them ready to walk in the door this first day. So those would be, it would be like preschool skills that they are lacking before they came into kindergarten. So that's what the readiness boot camp, Summer 2020 is. And so that would cover the salary of those two teachers to offer that camp. Title II, still pending. I have reached out to the state, kind of asking where we are on this. There shouldn't be any issues with it, but I have reached out as far as why it has not been approved. Same with the NESP and the Title IV. But you can see there what the money amounts for and also what we can ask for reimbursement for based on how the grant was written. On the backside, special education. We had the 2020 grant that had been approved about six weeks ago, probably at this point, maybe even longer than that, but you can see how the 2019, or the 2020-619 grant, that's our preschool grant, for serving children three through five, that was all spent, or will be spent, on curriculum, supplies, and materials. We have to adopt a new curriculum for our developmental preschool. They were using Unique, which is the curriculum that they had under Logan Sport. It's not the best that's out there, and so we're looking at, we have picked one out, and it's actually, it comes with bilingual materials that will be helpful as we already currently have some students with disabilities that languages, or English is not their first language. So it'll be a curriculum that will fit the needs of all students. Then the 2026-11, you can see there, it's salaries and benefits for our SLP, our SLP assistant, the developmental preschool teacher, or aid, middle school resource room teacher, school psych, and diagnostician, plus also sending 12 teachers to the Focus on Inclusion Conference this spring, plus also $8,000 in supplies. They re-wrote the 2019 grant, which was the money that was left over under the Logan Sport Co-op. Those have been rewritten and have been approved now. The 619 money will be applied to the preschool aid salary. And then the 611 rewrite, $5,000 towards educational evaluation kits. We are looking at the cost being significantly higher than that, but $5,000 will at least be applied towards what we need. And then contract services with the Center for Heart Healing and the Indiana School of the visually, or the blind and visually impaired. And it's going to cover the cost of salary and benefits for one high school teacher, two middle school teachers, the salary for the school psych, the DV preschool aid, there's some money left over there. So combined between the 619 and the 611, most, if not all, of her salary will be covered. And then the Skyward reporting module.
Questions for Mrs. Plank?
Do you know my chance on the Title grants? How much money? Is that similar to what we've had in the past, or is that?
Roughly, yeah. A few of the areas went up. Our NESP went up, and that is based off of the population of our EL students. And then Project Lead the Way went up a little bit. And Project Lead the Way, we still have all of our Title, I hate to even say that out loud, we still have all of the Title IV grant from last year that has not been touched, but I also don't know if we spent money and just haven't done the reimbursements yet. So I'm still working on that. So that's why I hate to say, because I do believe that there were Project Lead the Way bills that were paid, but we have not done the reimbursements for. So we'll get there. That's why I didn't put past monies on there that maybe haven't been spent, because I don't think that's necessarily what it is. But we're going to work on trying to get the money back.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Scheider.
I'm not closing the two minutes yet until I pass these. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. Hang on. Good evening. Just a couple of things, it's a front and back. Listening to Anne Marie, all the things she said made me think, oh my gosh, there's so many more things that we could talk about. But I wanted to highlight a couple of the things. Again, the leader of me, again, it's one of those things that it kind of takes off on its own, you know, during my rounds, walking the building, I walked by Mrs. Zinkin. Her role is not as a teacher. We did not hire her to teach, per se. She offers technology support, she's a wealth of information, but she's taken on having a couple of helpers, tech helpers. These are third graders, and they're replacing parts in the Chromebooks. Now, part of me thinks she does because her eyes are better, but, and I think she would even admit that, but it's incredible to see our youth contributing to the success of our schools. Anyway, I thought that was neat. Wanted to celebrate a little bit with what Mrs. Hansel's doing at ARC. She's been a great addition. They've been studying different artists. Here we got Norman Rockwell, and the kids have been emulating some of his work by making their own work like that. Last week, last week, we opened up in the evening, 3:30 to 6:30 or 7:00, somewhere along those lines. Again, last couple, actually, for years, we've had a book fair night. We've opened it up to families and grandparents. We partnered with our PTA for a meal. And again, probably the most touching part was, again, our student helpers. So again, our student helpers came in and they helped parents, grandparents by greeting and stuff like that. You know, I know there's been a little bit of talk about why we don't do a traditional grandparent thing. I will tell you, as someone who was here 16 years ago, I've seen, we've done traditional throughout the day. It's a lot. When you, the world today is a lot different than it was seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago, whenever it transitioned. But I do have a meeting already scheduled. We'd like to do a couple of different things, maybe tweak it a little bit. Personally, sorry. Personally, I think part, I'll take the responsibility for this year with gallbladder surgery. I don't know if you guys have heard, but there's been some change in our school district. Those things do weigh down on the building level. So where I hope there's no one here that thinks, well, we can do better. If anyone's thinking that, I know we can do better. But I don't fault my teachers. If anything, it was grandparents, it snuck up, and like, holy cow. So I want to thank Joyce Martin. She always does a tremendous job. I want to thank our student leaders for coming in and helping. I want to thank our PTA for, again, providing an extra thing to do. But we'll take some of the suggestions under advisement, but I'm proud of what we've had, what we've been doing. Any other questions or any questions? Okay, sorry, I did go over. Few seconds.
Okay. Mrs. Gill.
Good evening. I sent pictures today to the board members early just so you could get a heads up on the work that was done by the Community Volunteer Program of Northview Church. But they also, I wanted to highlight, touch to other areas of Camden. They did some work at the Camden Park. So if you're able to get out in that area, take a look at the changes they've been making around there. Also, we'd like to thank Doug Walker and the SFA Program, because they are planning and hosting our pumpkin patch trip coming up on the 15th, actually tomorrow. And they put a lot of work into that for us to make sure it can happen again. Our office referrals have started at Camden, much similar to what has already been started at DCES. We highlight the leader of me habits, just as Mr. Scheider talked about earlier. Our students have already hosted programs welcoming community members into our building. Lastly, our next big project is the feast, so your thoughts and well wishes as we welcome in people that have Thanksgiving dinner with us. Any questions?
Superdental report, Mr. Ron.
I don't have a lot, but want to remind people that our budget, we have a budget hearing on February 21st at 7:00 PM at the administration office. So that is available to people. Our ADM count is down seven this year, and that's probably good news for what it could be, but on the other hand, that's also a loss of $40,000. So that's something to keep in mind. We're still working on the bus maintenance issue. We've greatly reduced the cost from week to week, and we want to continue to see it go down. We're still having problems with the past issue of billing, and so we're continuing to meet with wears, trying to get some of those things resolved, because it's been a tremendously expensive proposition. I want to take a minute to, I've been here for a little while now, and I want to thank so many people. The administrators have been fantastic to me. I have neglected them for the sake of other things, trying to learn, trying to work on the budget, and they have really stepped up and done a wonderful job. The teachers, Mr. Connors here, I know, and representative through him, have been extremely cooperative and supportive. All the support staff, we have people working really hard, and I'd really especially like to recognize the people working in the ad office who have gone above and beyond, and the school board, who showed me a lot of support. So it's been a cooperative effort all the way around. And I would then, with that bit of good feeling, mention that once we get through this budget process, we're all going to have to sit down and really look at our costs and try to figure out where we can save money, because it's going to be critical going forward, because the main thing is, we want to make sure we maintain student programs, and we don't want other things to get in the way of that. So we're going to need for everyone to step up to the table and to see what we can get done to make sure that the finances are examined, straightened out, and priorities.
Any questions for Mr. Ron? Okay, consent items.
We have payroll claims of $1,021,767.85, and vouchers, $623,781.81.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent items, payroll, as Mr. Ron said, and the vouchers, payroll for $1,021,781.81. I'd also like the all of the consent items, A, B, C minus number six and seven out of the appointment stack. I'd like to do that separate. C, we'll just fill that one. We want to see the right end. Okay, and let's go ahead and put B in on that. And we need to add to B, two fundraisers, as they talked, fundraiser for parking cancer for Alex, to raise money for Alex Milberg at the next home game, where they're going to charge for parking. Also, add in there the fake part of that also, so that's covered for you guys. And then we also have a.
If I can interrupt you just a moment. I think that in talking with Mr. Circle tonight, I believe rather than charging for parking, I think they're going to ask for.
Donation, okay. Allow them to do donations, okay. Thank you for that. And then the girls is doing a treat through bond November 1st, ending November 8th, to raise money to help shoes and travel gear for the girls.
I'll second that.
Sorry. Next to me. We have motion on the floor to accept the consent items, resignation, you've plugged with classified staff, one through five, and eight, and B fundraising, field dress facilities. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye please.
I hope she's going to fill two roles. One will be to get the August and September balance, and then also she hopefully is going to provide some necessary nutrition. So I don't think it's going to be a long period of time.
Anything else?
We have a dollar for a break for, for, for.
Yes, it's on your, it's on the papers. While you're, since you're putting those items together, I would certainly say we want to recognize Rebecca Walker for the great work she's done there, she's put in, and wish her great luck for what her do late there.
Okay, with motion second on the floor, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Foe. Motion passes. Okay, C6, Corporation Secretary.
Mr. President, I'll move to under C6, Corporation Secretary, Samantha Bolden, to hire, for hiring a third secretary position. That's the end. Mr. Ron, what's the pay rate on that?
$16.
$16 per hour.
Okay, we have motion in a second to approve Samantha Bolden as Corporation Secretary. Hearing none, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Foe. Motion passes.
Samantha, we would like for you to stand, please, and we would like to thank you for coming to the meeting, and Samantha's coming to us from Purdue, and we're going, you're going to start on Wednesday. And so she has a world of experience, and she's done a lot of the things at Purdue that I know are going to benefit us in the office, and we're really excited about that for the world. Would you like to share anything?
Okay. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Okay, item C7, Corporation Treasurer.
Mr. President, I'll move to employee under Miller, sorry, for the Corporation Treasurer at the rate for salary of.
$45,000.
$45,000. At the rate of $45,000 per year in extra benefits.
Yeah, we have motion second on the floor to hire, Andrea, oh, Andrea. Okay, Andrea, okay. Andrea Miller as Corporation Treasurer. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Foe. Motion passes.
Like to do the same thing now. I don't know how much of an introduction, Andrea, but she's a familiar face in the courthouse. She's been there for nine years?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, excuse me.
Been the clerk for nine.
Well, maybe not that, yeah. As clerks, it's 2010, right? So again, she uses a lot of skills, and she's had a lot of practical experience with what we're going to ask her to do. She understands that it's a big challenge, and I certainly, she has expressed very strongly that she's up for the challenge. So welcome, Andrea. Do you have any words you'd like to share?
I just thank you for the opportunity. My term was going to be ending next year, and so I didn't really know what I was going to do, and when this came up, I just thought it seemed like maybe it might be the right fit, so I'll give it a shot. We'll know.
And I believe you're going to start on Wednesday afternoon, right? Okay, thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, C, creation of a new position, DCSC preschool classroom aide. Mr. Ron, you want to explain that more to me?
Well, we, Mr. Scheider, you may want to help share in this, but in order to qualify for funding for preschool, we, there are several hoops that the state wants us to jump through, and this is one of those.
So we talked to you, I think Tana, Marianna, and myself talked to you, maybe May and June, just about this early childhood capacity building preschool grant. And the grant, the total was $35,000 that we got from the state and through small matching donation from local community members. But with that grant, I think approximately 20,000 was towards curricular materials and the possibility of expanding the program, because remember, we have two sections now, but also to bring in another personnel to help with the numbers, because the state is pretty rigorous with the numbers. What this does is this allows us, and again, I want it to be known that this position only exists at the very least for the duration of this grant. This is not a forever, because who knows what's going to be happening in August and September. But once we get it figured out, hopefully it'll all take care of itself. But these are the steps that we need, not only do we write the grant to help to bring this person in, it provides the funding to support this hourly employee, but it also allows us the next steps to pursue LEP funding, which means our parents will be able to apply for eligibility funds through the state, which again, we've never been able to do before, but the state opened that up a couple months ago. So we've actually officially applied the application process. So these are all these multitude of things that need to happen to make sure we're in compliance, as the guy from the state comes in and he checks out our personnel to make sure our ratios are, in fact, appropriate.
And this is the grant that we had have like, what was it, 5%?
Yep, 5% matching funds. 1750 matching funds, 33250.
That's what that is, our 35.
Exactly.
We have motion second for the preschool classroom aide. Any other discussion and questions, Mr. Scheider?
Do you know where to be filling this position?
I'd like to post it tomorrow. What I'd like to see things. I'd like to post it tomorrow, what I'd like to see things, what I'd like to see happen is around November first through November fourteenth, somewhere in that window, the gentleman from the state comes in, he says, "You're good to go," he checks to see that we hired a person, and then it's a matter of us getting the right paperwork into the hands of the thirty-two current families in preschool, yet then to submit the paperwork to the state, and then hopefully there'll be at, at least a small amount of reimbursement funds coming back to us, and then we can hone that over time.
Is it full-time position?
I believe it's five or six hours, I can't remember what I wrote on the thing, I think it's five and a half hours, I think when you do for thirty minutes, um, they get it, they're there for six hours in a day. It's not on par with the other...
You got six point two-five hours.
Six point two-five.
It was half an hour for lunch, so five and three quarters hours.
We actually tried to keep it so it was, so we could stretch the dollars out to the road we're paying and stuff like that, so five and three quarters, five and three quarters.
All the salary will be delivered by...
Yes.
They will be dealt by employee?
That would be my understanding, yes. They're not eligible for benefits.
Just in time for us, the, uh, need of prepay stuff, it doesn't, I mean, special needs prepaid.
No, this is with the lien salvage as it currently exists, yes.
Okay, yes. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, and a second on the floor, to accept this preschool classroom A position, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you.
New business contract approval, physical therapy and occupational therapy contract with Paragon Rehabilitation Trilogy Rehab Services. Do we wanna get a motion on the floor before we, before we ask the questions?
Mr. President, um, I'd like to, uh, move to make a motion to approve the contract under five A for PTOT, uh, with Paragon Rehabilitation Tril- Trilogy Rehab Service. And so we got, uh, Performance Services, is that part of the name?
Yeah.
Oh, that's out there, okay.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second, we'll open it up for discussion. Mrs. Quiney, would you like to be the one person on this?
Sure, sure. Um, so we had started the year with OT and PT services contracted with two different, um, outside contracting companies. Um, OT was done through ProCare, and that was with an employee who, um, Logan Sport had contracted with, and she had showed interest of wanting to stay on with us, um, Twin Lakes and Carol. Um, well, now we're nine weeks in, and she has left all three of us, so, um, that contract is now null and void with that company, which was ProCare, and then Soliant was who we had contracted our, um, PT services with, and she, again, was with all three corporations, and she has now quit. So, I reached out, I called St. Elizabeth, just down the road here, and said, "Here's what we have, we've got three different corporations, are you willing to work with us?" And they were so excited, they said, "Absolutely, when can we meet?" So I met with, um, a gentleman from Fort Wayne who kinda oversees this area last, I guess, two weeks ago this Wednesday, met with him, kinda talked about our needs, and then he shared that information with the local people here, um, Twin Lakes Delphi and myself, or Twin Lakes Carol and myself, we met with, um, the local people here last Friday morning, talked about everything. All of our services are gonna be sixty-five dollars an hour, um, I'm meeting with them again tomorrow as we figure out our schedule, um, because based on the different services is how many hours that we actually need, but those rates are ten, at least ten to fifteen dollars cheaper than what we were paying the contract companies, and we pay no mileage. Um, if, if Camden were past that nine-mile mark, we'd be paying mileage for them to go out there, but because it's right there, they're not going to charge us, so that is no further than what it is, otherwise we'd be paying mileage, but they are, they're willing to go out there, they're willing to be here, um, like I said, they're just, with them being more in the medical field versus the school side, just helping them, um, learn the system within the computers, um, as far as, you know, getting their reports in for the IEPs, um, we'll provide the training, thank goodness it's all three corporations do the same stuff, so it'll be easy for training on all three of our parts, um, and then just getting it scheduled so that they don't plan to come in second graders are at recess that day or something like that, so working with them tomorrow, um, to work out all the logistics.
And a reminder, we're doing this because we used to do this to the Logan Sport Cooperative,
Absolutely.
and now we have to provide those services on our own. And the other thing is, as we, we work toward Medicaid billing, a lot of this, these services will qualify for Medicaid billing, for transportation and, uh, the actual hourly time, and so as we get that process in place, uh, that'll be a benefit to the corporation.
So as far as our needed positions, PTO and our psychist network, is there any other positions at this point that, uh, I mean, that's the big...
No, once OT and PT are covered, then we are fully, I don't wanna say fully staffed, we still have, um, we have the middle school aide position, I, um, I have three applicants now, um, and I do believe that was a position that was already board approved, we've just not hired at this point, um, but that is an aide for a student here that, um, his IEP is written for a one-on-one pair, um, so hoping that as soon as we come back from fall break to interview those three and get somebody spotted in that position, but that position again, it's five hours a day, no benefits.
I'd like to amend the motion to make sure it reflects the sixty-five dollars an hour for the kid.
Second.
Any other questions?
I'm in, I mean, I'm in, you're in the next different grade. I see speech, language pathologist.
We don't do speech with them, we don't do speech.
Okay, uh, but then I see PTA, MTA, COTA, forty-five dollars.
So depending on who they give us, it could be cheaper, um, so depending on this, so the difference between one can do an evaluation and one cannot, so the PTA, OTA are like assistants, they can provide the services, but they can't actually go in and do the evaluation to diagnose the student's needs services. They can provide the services, and they will be overseen by an OT, PT, um, so the high, the highest that we are gonna be paying an hour, depending on who's providing the services, would be that sixty-five dollar, so it could be as low as forty-five. They have to figure out what their staffing is on those days that we are going to figure out the schedule, so I can have more concrete numbers to elaborate on.
Yeah, you're sixty-five, four, forty-five to sixty-five.
Thirty-five for assistants, right?
Mm-hmm.
I will amend that to forty-five dollars for the assistant OTPTs, and sixty-five for the certified OTPTs, right?
I was just giving you what the most was.
I'll second that again.
Hey, let's get it right, it doesn't matter.
Triple?
Any other questions that we can... Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Quiney.
Welcome.
Number two, Performance Services, Mr. Ron.
This is an unusual contract in the fact that they're returning money to us, so, uh, there was a twenty-thousand-dollar contingency fund, for lack of a better term, that is in your, uh, contract with, uh, Performance Services, and so that money is not gonna be needed for any of the projects that, uh, that they performed in, so as a result, that money will be, uh, taken out of their contract and returned to us. I, I think, I, it is a contract.
It is a contract, okay. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the third amendment for Performance Services installation contract here. Okay, we have a motion, and a second, to... Seventy... Third, Third Amendment, the installation contract for Performance Services for the about twenty thousand. Any discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. D, consideration of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Delphi School Calendar, Mr. Ron.
Uh, I, we should've run off a lot more copies, and, and so board members should have a copy in their pocket, hopefully, and, uh, but, uh, this is very much the same calendar that we've had in the past, and, uh, the week's changed for the IHSAA and for other events, so that, that adds some modification for it, but it still provides for, uh, the, uh, week in October, the three days for Thanksgiving, the two weeks at, at Christmas, uh, the six days for spring break, and, uh, the last day of school right now is technically scheduled for May to play, so that'll be an early, an early time to be out.
I think so, of course.
Start date is, uh, no, the first, the first teacher day is the fourth, the first student day is the sixth.
Mr. President, I move to accept the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one calendar year as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second, to adopt the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school calendar, discussion?
Yes, this one, well, I would like to, I'd like to bring you the follow-up year once we get this one done.
I'm assuming that something like this is a calendar week before we start school in July. I mean, is it because of, is it because of the way the calendar lays, if we keep going back earlier?
And then, yes, we'll get later, yeah.
It'll get back to the six.
Any other comments or discussion?
If this has been awkward with you and everything, yes.
The chair.
Yeah, with the committee of members and non-members, yeah.
Thank you.
We appreciate that, Mr. Ron.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second, to accept the calendar, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Future dates and agenda items. October twenty-first, I'll be at budget hearing on bus replacement, capital projects in the budget, at seven P.M. at administration office. Anybody else have anything to add to the future dates? Papa John's Pizza Trailer will be at the high school, middle school parking lot on the seventeenth. November sixteen, sixth grade, going to IRT. Varicose knee resales coming up soon. And, if they say anything else... Hearing none, we'll move on. Board comments? Mr. Sam?
First, I'll be here again, I'll go right ahead. Uh, welcome to Samantha, Andrea, it's gonna be nice working with you again as well, looking forward to that. Uh, Gaila, thank you for what you've been doing, and you've got a big, a big task in the last few weeks, so appreciate all your hard work. Um, I wanted to also welcome Jordan, Angel, we've had that chance, so again, like there's both on the board this year, um, the volleyball, they picked, picked pink event, did you success? How much money was raised?
I think it was just under four thousand, so that's great, maybe other schools probably would go faster.
Yeah, that's a great amount, yeah. Um, and I also wanted to thank, uh, Mrs. Gil for the work being done with the church at the Camden School, the pictures were, uh, really impressive, and seeing these stuff, seeing the volunteers in there, and what's going on, so, a- and thank you to all the administrators and everybody else that's here tonight for everything that's going on, uh, a lot of, a lot of, uh, hard work going on this time of year, so, uh, we really do appreciate everybody.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, um, welcome you too, it's nice to have you here, and never be afraid to speak out, okay? Again, to the administrators, wanna thank everybody there, um, it's, uh, there is a lot of great things going on, and, um, we, uh, I, I wanna say thank you to Rebecca, uh, for what you've done for us, and get us to where we're at now, and, uh, sorry to see you gone, but on the same token, uh, we've got people that'll fill in on your, your shoes and get going too, um, so welcome Andrea, Andrea, sorry.
It's fine.
I've got all people of mine, different ones. Uh, Sam, I'm glad that you're on board, because, uh, I now get to give up all these note-taking stuff, but, uh, i- it is great to see people wanting to step up, step into our community and, and be part of it, and, and that's what it takes to have a great organization, so, um, Mr. Scheider, uh, I wanna thank you, um, it's never an easy job being administrator, I know that, and so, uh, appreciate all the work your staff, everybody does, the middle school, same way, um, Mrs. Gil, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, again, like Mr. Smith said, uh, it looks wonderful there, and so, it's, it's really great when community members wanna be involved in our school system, and that just tells us, uh, that's what needs to be said on, on our, our Facebook, Facebook pages and the media and everything like that, so, with that, um...
Mr. Briggs?
I'd like to thank the administrators for their reports, I always find that my most interesting, pictures are leaving everyone to find out. Uh, all of our work that you've done, I appreciate it, and I'd like to welcome Jordan, it's his first time here. Samantha and Andrea, I want to welcome both of you here, for the work that you're doing. And, uh, I don't wanna leave out all the hugging, Mr. Ron, and, um, you really do this, you're doing a lot of, uh, you're doing a lot of...
Jordan, you like to tell me about the end?
Thanks for a lot of you for being here, I would say lots, lots of you for being here, um, I wanted to thank you for helping us with the, uh, operation that we're working on.
Angel?
Um, there was, uh, I was interested about, um, this law, can you back to the, okay, um, like, um, certain, um, that seems, uh, a little, um, concerned, is, uh, something that I've seen, uh, um, building classes, uh, so, uh, I think it's really good that...
Mark? Yeah, everybody's got cover at all.
Um, Rebecca, thanks for all you did, um, welcome to our new central office staff, Pam and Andrea, glad to have you aboard, uh, don't hesitate to ask for your help for what I've given you, and want you to be very successful in this one. Everybody have a safe and happy fall break, thanks for your day, you have the whole job. Enjoy the fall weather, and, uh, just working on sectional football, and, uh, Rock, and then we...
Two weeks. Thank you. Rebecca, thank you, the hard work you've put in the last few weeks. Samantha and Andrea, welcome, looking forward to working with you. Uh, administrators, thank you for your reports and so forth, Mrs. Quiney, thank you for the timeline, this, this kinda made me happy, when you put it on paper, we can see what, what each one of those grants is going for, and what you choose for. Uh, Jordan and Angel, welcome, again, and, uh, thanks for being here. And with that... Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, that'll be the adjournment.